... Meeting in Essex County Board of Supervisors, ladies and gentlemen. Meeting is ordered, please. Join me in the flag.
Flagging the flag of the United States of America and in the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Harrington?
Here.
Mr. Merrihale?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
What's that?
Mr. Depot?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Monte?
Here.
Mr. McNally?
Here.
Mr. Skozavala?
Here.
Mr. Migga?
Here.
Mr. Puitte? Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Manau has been excused. Mr. Whitson?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mr. Tyler?
Here.
Mr. Gulland?
Here.
And Mr. Preston?
Here.
And welcome back, Mr. Preston. Thank God. This morning start, I'd like to have Patty Bashaw come up. We'll be having a briefing on the progress of the EMS study.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you. A positive feedback. So I'd like to introduce Paul Bishop. He's the vendor that was chosen, not he, but his company was a vendor that was chosen for doing the survey and helping us kind of come up with some results and some possibilities moving forward for EMS. His company that he works for is CGR, so with no further delay, I'd like to have him get started.
I can do the flipping? Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Paul Bishop. The firm that I work for is CGR, Center for Governmental Research. We're based in Rochester, New York. We've been working on the project for, oh, it was about since last August. My background, just real quickly, I've been a paramedic for 21 years now, 22. I just had to recertify for my seventh time. So those of us in EMS, every three years we have to recertify. The presentation I'm going to give you today is, I've been told to keep it to 20 minutes. I've got my watch. You'll see me look down at it periodically, make sure I'm staying on track. And these are really our initial findings of what's going on in emergency medical services in Essex County. So the outline that we'll be covering this morning is a real brief project background. We'll be talking about the baseline report, which is what you have in front of you. That's that bound 80-page report. It is exciting reading, so if you're ever having trouble falling asleep, pick it up, flip through it. Reality, there's about a 12-page executive summary that has the majority of the information that you'll need to know, and then we go into a little bit more detail. And then after we created that baseline report, we got into the strategic planning processes, which is really the meat of what we're doing here. So the baseline report is describing what's going on today, and the strategic planning is what is your future. And we came up with some of the key aspects of a strategic plan, the mission and vision statements, and then the strategic priorities. So I'll get into those in detail as we go on. A little out of focus at least, or I reversed my contacts this morning, one or the other. There we go. So project background, this all should be things that you know, and just so you know, this presentation is coming to you this morning for 20 minutes. And then tonight, the EMS community is gathering across the street and up the road a little bit, and I'll be giving them a very similar version of this presentation, but we expect that to go a little bit longer. And please, as I go, if you have any questions, ask them. So we started in July, or we were hired in July, we started our work in August. During that time, I've been up to Essex County on five different occasions, had the opportunity to meet with representatives of each EMS agency. In most cases, I was at their base. Some cases, we did some joint meetings to make it work. Also met with other key people, some of the public safety officials, medical directors, and other folks who have influence over the emergency medical services system. We aren't done, but what you have for this baseline report describes what exists today in Essex County for emergency medical services. We do a county overview where we talk about the population and the topography, what makes it challenging to provide services across this county, which is not new to you, I'm sure, but it might be new to some other people who have a broader audience. It gives a system overview where we talk about the communication system, we talk about the hospitals, education, coordination, all the different aspects of emergency medical services. It's not just the ambulance that shows up at the door and takes people to the hospital. It's the things that happen before that and around that. We profile each of the EMS agencies, and I'll give you a real quick snapshot of that profile. We did one for each of the, I think we're at 16 agencies that are providing service in this county, so I'll show you that for one of the agencies. And then we looked at the calls for service in 2015, based on information that we received from the agencies, which is, it was interesting to work with. I actually got a paper spreadsheet back from one of the agencies that was thankfully typed in by somebody else, but that's how we got our information, was on a green bar paper. We did a survey of the EMS workforce where we had 168 EMS providers that work in Essex County respond, which was a fabulous response rate. We only have about 200 EMS providers that live in Essex County, so for 168 of them to take the time to answer that survey, let us know about what's going on. And the results of that survey are included in that report in front of you right now. And then we had some findings, some immediate actions, and some next steps. And that's where I will spend some time this morning on the baseline report before we get into the strategic planning part of it. Behind me on the screen, this is just a real quick snapshot. I think I picked Keene Rescue Squad, actually one of the smaller agencies in the county. And we just break down the service area, and it's not the full town of Keene, but the area that they're responsible for, their fire district, the type of agency, they're a nonprofit corporation, so they're separate from the fire department, how they run. They have 12 volunteers are the ones who are staffing their ambulances. They have one ambulance, the type of monitor, how many people live in their service area. That's for the whole town of Keene, not just their service area. The U.S. Census doesn't track fire district population, so we had to grab the whole town. We talk about their calls for service. So in 2015, they had 64 calls for service in their service area. So they're not very active. They don't go out all that often, a little bit more than once a week. And we show what their response times are. So they're median, or roughly the average response time. And then emergency medical services, we like to talk about the fractile or the percentile time. So if you have an average response time of five minutes, that sounds great, but that average can include 25 and 30-minute response times, as long as you get a couple of one-minute response times in there. So when we use percentile, what we say is 90% of the calls are shorter, 90% of the response times, or 90% of the calls are shorter than this. So they had a 90% of the time, they were responding to the call in nine minutes. So from the time they were alerted of a call, they were responding within nine minutes, 90% of the time. They got on scene 20 minutes, 90% of the time. So that is, there's not a right, there's not a national standard that says this is what you need to do, but there are some biological standards. So when the heart stops beating, you have eight minutes to get the heart started again, or you begin to suffer irreversible brain damage. So that's one of the things that we begin to look at when we talk about what should a response time be for EMS. There's certain biology we can't get around. But we have one of these profiles set up for every agency, and we also could have a paragraph that gives some other description about maybe what's going on with their budget, what happens to their community, what's unique about their response profile. One of the other charts that we have is what happens, why do people call 911 for an ambulance in Essex County? And this is that graph that shows the majority of the calls that we had here. This is about 75% of the 4,400 calls fall into one of these 20 categories. Trouble breathing, chest pain, abdominal pain, pain in general, other not specified by agency. Those are our top categories that we see. So we go through this report, we break that down, we have similar descriptions for a number of different categorizations. Where do we transport, where, from Essex County? So that gives you an idea of what's going on here in Essex County. Some of our key findings, there were just over 4,000 EMS calls in 2015, and these are 911 calls. These don't count interfacility transports in most cases. So about 11 calls per day, 11 times a day, someone in this county is asking for an ambulance to show up. Only the five busiest ambulance agencies responded to one or more calls a day, and no agency in the county responded on average to more than two calls a day. Nearly all agencies, and there is a goal, a standard that's set by the medical directors that cover this community, that they want to have an ambulance rolling, rolling towards a call, not on scene, rolling towards a call, within 10 minutes, 90% of the time. And most of the agencies meet that. And not every ambulance provider is created equal. We have advanced life support and basic life support. Anything that says ambulance on the side is guaranteed to have basic life support, but we want to have advanced life support for the more serious calls. And in most cases, we're able to get advanced life support to calls in Essex County. No non-commercial agency reports being able to provide the services that are being asked of them without some sort of tax subsidy. Everyone has some sort of tax revenue to help them go. More than half the agencies have a substantial reliance on that. It gets detailed in the report, how many, kind of the percentage that they get from current tax dollars. There are about 215 EMS providers that live in Essex County. That doesn't mean they work here. This is from Department of Health data, so that's just based on their residency resident that's reported to the Department of Health. And it breaks down, there's only about three certified first responders, 159 EMTs, the most common level of certification, five AEMTs, and it's kind of a variation of EMT where they're able to do a couple of advanced things, and then 37 critical care technicians. So this is where we really begin to get advanced life support here, is with a critical care techs. And then only 10 paramedics. And there's some, there has been for my 20-plus years in EMS, some rumbling that they're going to get rid of the critical care level and force everyone to paramedic. It's not going to happen overnight. There's going to be time to transition it, at least 20 years, because it's been on a rumor for that long. And the Department of Health doesn't have a specific plan to do that yet, but that's something this community should consider, is what does it mean, what would we have to do to move to, so we have more paramedics? And this was kind of a startling finding, although when you look at the Essex County population overall, it's an aging population, and the emergency medical services workforce is not exempt from that. More than half the providers are over 50, and when we did our survey, a substantial number of them expect to be leaving providing EMS in the next five to 10 years. So this is something on the horizon, that you need to develop that workforce that's going to be here to care for your population, because you're going to be losing a lot of your providers in the next decade. So we have some immediate recommendations, some things that we came up with that you should do as soon as we can to improve your service. These aren't grand plans. These are things that you can do without a lot of investment. It's change in policy, it's convincing people to do the right, to do a different thing. Shorten the time interval for mutual aid. Right now, when there's a call and an ambulance crew isn't immediately identified to be able to respond, they wait eight minutes before they call the next agency. And it's not easy to get from one place to another in this county. So if you're waiting eight minutes to start calling the help from the next agency over, you're delaying that response time. That needs to get addressed sooner the better. Need to make sure that you're getting ALS for your most serious calls. There are times where that local agency, look at, I'm going to pick on Keene because I had them up here, they don't have a lot of advanced life support available. If that life support is not, you know, if they're running an errand, and they're not in their community when the call comes in, we want to make sure that we can get advanced life support there. That means calling it from another community, and that's not a part of the plan right now. And first response for critical calls. Talk about that physiological thing, eight minutes. Eight minutes from when the heart stops to irreversible brain damage. We need to get somebody there to do CPR in those eight minutes. Doesn't have to be a firefighter, doesn't have to be an EMT, doesn't have to be a cop. I can teach CPR to anyone over the age of 10. And if we can figure out a way to get them alerted that there's somebody who needs their help and get them there quickly, we can improve the survival rate. It doesn't happen that frequently. There's only 4,000 calls in this county in a year. And maybe if we call 10% of them, really critical calls, and only a fraction of those are CPR calls, maybe 50 times a year, we're going to need somebody there quickly. And we need to come up with a system where we can do that consistently and effectively. Want to be able to develop some data dashboards so we can manage EMS better. As one of the questions here, how, do you know when a call, when an agency doesn't respond to a call? It's not well-tracked. Now, you have some really good data that's tracked in your records management system, but there's some struggle getting that information out. So you need to work with your vendors, you need to work with your dispatch center to be able to get the data out so it can be used to manage and say, hey, this part of this agency is not meeting their obligations, is not able to respond on a regular basis. We need to be able to track that so we can help improve it, identify what's the problem. Are they just not able to respond during the day? Does no one want to get up at 3:30 in the morning? What is it? Want to be able to alert neighboring agencies to assist with mutual aid. Some of the calls that occur get particularly long. In Newcombe, when they transport to the hospital, it's three hours from when at the start of the call to when they get back. So during that three hours, there's not another ambulance in that area. We need to call somebody in from the neighboring jurisdiction. We want that neighboring jurisdiction to know that they're on alert for those, during those three hours, so they're a little bit more ready to respond. I can cut down on that response time. No-fault quality improvement process for critical events. Critical events don't happen that often, so we want to be able to give people good feedback when that occurs. I'm looking at the time, I want to get to some other things, so I'm skipping ahead a little bit. You have some other slides that are there that I'm showing tonight. If you have questions on them, I also gave you my business card. Please feel free to give me a call, drop me an email. We came up with an Essex County EMS vision and mission statement. The mission is to provide timely, high-quality, professional, out-of-hospital emergency care and transport to residents and visitors throughout Essex County. This is the mission of EMS in Essex County. It doesn't matter what the agency says on the outside of the ambulance or on the outside of the base, but this is what we're trying to do in Essex County EMS. And the vision, so this is where we want to get, we're not there right now, but this is where we want to get, is to establish a sustainable, cohesive, evolvable system for emergency medical care in Essex County. And to that end, we have our strategic priorities. There's some clinical care improvement that needs to happen. There's some EMS education concerns, some improvements that we want to do. It's not that it's poor right now, but we want to make it better. Need to maintain that existing workforce, including the volunteers. So when we use the word workforce, when we use the term professional, it has nothing to do with a paycheck. It has to do with the people who are providing the work. Some fiscal management issues, and then operational support. So this last one, the operational support, is what I'm going to spend the most time on, because this is what the vision is. We need to change how the ambulances respond, so we're using that term operational support for that. So the goal of this system is we want to have an ambulance responding 90 seconds of the time they're alerted, if it's a staffed ambulance. And within eight minutes, if it's a volunteer ambulance. And not everyone's going to be staffed, not everything's going to be volunteered. As we talk about this, there's time to, we need some time to move forward. ALS to all serious calls, quick response to critical calls, we already talked about that. System management, we want to have some standard operating guidelines. We need this to be financially sustainable. There's going to be some taxes involved. There's already taxes involved. So the question is, how do we make it work cohesively across the county? And the personnel, we need to make it a living wage. Those EMTs that are working right now in this community, many of them are working 60, 70-hour weeks between three and four employers to be able to make ends meet. So we want to look at what does it need to be to be a living wage for them. So one thing is there's a base service model that should be developed across the whole county, and you're already doing some of this, right? You have Patty, she's your county EMS coordinator, that's part of this administration. You have a 911 center, a consolidated dispatch, that's part of it, and you're already doing those things. There's already some training, but it needs to be enhanced. Some other stuff about purchasing of supplies, that mutual aid coordination, quality assurance are all things that we can look at. Centralizing the billing, IT and telecom might bring you some economies of scale and be able to improve some of the financial picture of it. We talk about a higher level of service. So that first one is, this is what we need to do for everyone in Essex County. And we have some other areas that we want to try and improve on. This is the actual ambulances rolling. And you can keep your status quo, and that can continue, of all these different agencies trying to do the same thing in a slightly different way in each community. You could move to the other Jurassic side, which is a single agency that's doing everything. The model that I've got here to talk about in a little more detail is a single agency providing primary ambulance and ALS response to the municipalities that want them there. Some agencies have a healthy system, they don't feel the need to change, and that's okay. But there's some other communities that are saying, you know what, we want some help, and we want somebody to come in as soon or the better. So what does that mean? I developed a model where we took four of the five busiest agencies, six other agencies, so 10 altogether. We excluded two communities, both commercials and the industrial ambulances, we pulled this model together. This model accounted for 75%, or 73% of the population and 68% of the 911 calls in 2015. So we took a look at it, that's how much, that's what happened. This phantom agency would respond to about seven calls, 7.7 calls per day, eight calls per day. The ALS staffing, the BLS staffing would be out of 10 different ambulance stations. Some of the ambulances would be staffed, paid staff all the time, some would be staffed, say 16 hours a day or 12 hours a day, depending on what the demand is in that community and its proximity to the neighbors and where we might be able to get mutual aid. The model created had 388 hours of paid staff a day. Wow, that's a lot. Well, you consider, you already have about 140 hours paid, and maybe if we can do this right, we can get some volunteers to cover some of those shifts. We can pick some of those shifts and target them, and give some enhancements, and be able to improve that. So maybe we're not going all of that 388 hours, but I wanted to build a model that we had a straw man, and we could pick apart and refine. So we had to start somewhere. An average wage for those employees is just shy of $16 an hour, and those are those different levels of service, whether it's an EMT, a critical care tech, or a paramedic. When we averaged it all together, it came out to about $15 an hour. For modeling aspects, we had to figure out what the benefits would be, about 60% of their wages. And all said and done, because I'm looking at time, I want to make sure you guys can stay on your schedule, to operate a system like this is just shy of $10,000 a day, $9,600 a day. It's expensive. And there is the ability to have revenue from your transports. We look at about five transports a day, maybe $650, maybe $700 for transport that you would get paid. We're able to cover some of that, but there's going to need to be a subsidy to do this. The unfortunate problem here is you can develop a system to cover 4,000 calls a day, but it's very difficult to do over your almost 2,000 square miles, because we want to get that response time for where it's reasonable over that whole area. So we have to spread out the resources, and to do that, we need to have multiple staffed bases. There's some variations of that service, where you could have staff leasing to some agencies, they want to keep their ambulance, they have a good volunteer cadre that's able to cover most of the time, but they need some staff support during the day, or maybe during the overnight, or maybe when they have a festival going on in their community. You could have a central agency that provides the services during certain times of the day, but the rest of the time of the day is covered by the local volunteers. That's okay. There are these different variations that we can do, and we're not set on any one model today, but we want to give you an idea of what's going on and what the thoughts are at this point. So how does this get paid for? There's different models of revenue. One is that revenue recovery by billing patients. There's a possibility of developing a service district that would cover the whole county, and that would allow you, and if we call it a service district, right, it allows us to get a different properties than a tax would, traditional property tax. And the whole county would be asked to pay for a certain basic level of service. You're already doing that for certain services, and this would be enhancing those services to enhance your level of care, meet those, that community expectation. And communities that want to have a higher level of service, they want to have that ambulance based in their town, with their village, they would be, say, great, we'll do it, we'll staff it, this is the number of hours, and this is how we're going to ask you to pay for it. And we come up with a formula. That formula can be based on a variety of things. Requests for service in the community, historical, whether it's assessed value, we talk about the number of unit hours where that ambulance is staffed in that area, what's the residential population, what's the visitor population? Because I know some of your communities, that size really increases when we take into, the population really goes up on the summer weekend. And the presence of call generators, such as senior living facilities and health clinics, those are locations that generate more EMS calls than other places. So where are we going from here? I'm already beginning to work with Patty and other folks on her staff at the agencies to implement some of these immediate action items. We're going to further develop these options based on any feedback we get from you this morning, from the EMS colleagues tonight, and we want to refine this model, so we have something that people can really consider and say, okay, is this something we want to move forward with? Is there other revenue that we can chase after? We're going to work with a steering committee to see what is the support of this community? How can we get this to move forward? How do we address these different concerns? And we're going to make sure this baseline report and a subsequent that's going to be a shorter, that's the strategic planning document, gets shared with the people who need to see it, the decision-makers, the people who can be supportive of this. We're going to get that out there. So all relevant documents, and those sitting up here, we're able to get a copy of them. I know those sitting in the gallery don't, but you can get it off of the project website. And they will be posted, if they're not already there, they will be posted within 24 hours to show that full baseline report and the presentation that I'm making tonight, which is the full set of slides. Each one of these communities, each one of your communities, you need to ask some questions of yourselves. Where's your EMS agency going to be in the next one, five, and 10 years? Is it a healthy organization, or are you going to be struggling? Is the current staffing model viable if somebody retires, somebody moves away, somebody gets ill, is that going to be able to work? How are the agency finances? Is it going to be a going concern? Will remain a going concern. How is that EMS response? We're able to give you some measurements for 2015 today. I'm going to work with Patty to set that up so a similar report can get generated out of your records management system for 2016 pretty quickly. How is your clinical care? Is it being measured? Who reviews it? Is this something that you're happy that they're there to show up and take care of you or your loved ones? Going forward, Essex County is faced with a variety of challenges, from personnel retention recruitment to the challenging finances of operating this essential service, not to mention your topography. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to create a high-performance EMS system that will be sustainable, cohesive, and evolvable for all the residents and visitors in Essex County. So that's my last slide. I'm going to throw up, so you have an idea of what's up on the website that we have for you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
That's an excellent report. The county-wide district, which we've been talking about out here for years, so you pick up all your exempt properties, and the tax rate actually would probably be minimal, even if you had to raise $4 million per year. Is that something that's been done in other counties in New York State? Is it allowable under current law, New York State law?
I am not, there are several county EMS systems. I am not aware of any one of them using a EMS service district for that funding.
This actually could be a good proposal for the consolidation effort that the state is now requiring of the county, that we, I think we should, should pursue. Because obviously, when you look at the numbers here, and the, you know, 16 different services, I believe there are, that it's, you know, we're heading down a slippery slope here with emergency services, so with ambulance response.
Yes, and I certainly think it would qualify for that, because you have several of the ambulances are fire district-based or part of the town, so those clearly meet that consolidation requirement. meet that consolidation requirement. Mr.?
All the counties have, they have, um, the category, is it, is it, is it, is it?
I am not aware of one. I know Patty has done her, her share of research as well, but I will, I'll look back into a lot of what has happened with these county EMS agencies, is they have grown up really to be a backstop to their, their volunteer systems. They weren't really, they have a little bit higher call volume, so they were able to, to do it based on their billing and a minimal subsidy. And so that's, it's really one of our, your biggest challenges in Essex County is that your, your population is so spread out, your calls are so spread out, so you have to spread your resources to respond to them, to a number of different pockets. I'm not prepared to, to give you a lot of details for that this morning, I'm sorry, but, but I can work on that for you. Yes, sir?
That was kind of what my question was leading up to. Now, from understanding, we talked about potential for countywide district, if I read, saw that right?
Yes.
But communities could opt in or opt out?
That's correct.
If we're in a countywide district, does that mean all the taxpayers in Essex County, every community, if their district opted out, are they still taxed for that service?
So that's why I wanted to present two different layers of, two different levels of service. So one was that base model of service, I, the one I can kind of scroll back to that, which is something where, this is something that everyone in the county's going to need. And every community, doesn't matter how good your agency is, you're going to need a backup sooner or later. So there, there is some, some argument to be able to subsidize the, the operation of some of that ambulance service, but these are the things, that coordination, that 911 center, the, the, the administration, enhancing your education program, those are things that would go across the whole county, whether or not the county agency is servicing them. And then if they say, yeah, we want to have that countywide ambulance service covering our community, then they would be asked to pay at a higher rate, and maybe that's something where the town would be, you know, the, the county agency would say, this is, Town of Lewis, this is how much we want from you, based on your call volume, your population, your, your service area.
Can we legally do that, Dan?
Can, can there be a different service, a different contract between the county and towns for different levels of service? I, I've seen it done with highway, and I've seen it done with law enforcement. I can't imagine why it couldn't be done with EMS.
I have a look at the EMS, Mr. Preston, um, ambulance service. I will give a general, uh, request that you can have a lot out in the realm of, like, fire district or water district, we usually have it, it's something, it's happening, but the name is, what happens is, is, uh, the, uh, county, we're not planning to record on the district, right, they involve that, which involves a certain area, everybody in that area, whether they want it or not, we're involved in that, in that, like, they don't have to pay. Even if they, let's say from a council, we don't want that, this is, this is a reference to water, um, for us now, it's about, we're in the district, even though we're not getting service from the district, whatnot at all, we're still being identified by the, within the district, in that, uh, people are still going to be taking care of, your neighbors are going to be taken care of. It's kind of a, um, a, 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 a,[923.13]
Easily, even if you were stationed right, equally between the towns, so.
I know.
That's something to think about.
And that's on a day like today. During one of the snowstorm you had in March, you know, we needed sled dogs. So, and when we look at the, you know, where to station the ambulances, you have to take that, it's not just on that call volume, you have to acknowledge that there's sometimes no place, no way to get from here to there, so you have to have someplace and someone in both places. Other questions? Please, I gave you my business card, please send me email, give a phone call, I'm happy to answer other questions as we go on.
Okay, I got to go. I'm going to add one editorial comment to the steering committee and stuff, but one of the important words that was in there on the mission and everything is, for the vision is evolvable. Because this, you're going to have to get out of the digital yes or no issue and take a look at analog solution, okay? Because, you know, eventually, pretty much, I think everybody knows, the way things are going with fire districts and volunteer fire departments and EMS districts is, they're suffering in volunteerism and stuff going on throughout the county. So how can we come up with a system in which we can, we can change the levels of service, you know, to meet the needs over time? So, you know, we're trying to get away from the idea of like, okay, as of tomorrow, there are no more local volunteer EMS districts, and we're all going to be, all be professional, that's what we're looking at, evolvable. So it's going to have to take some out of the box thinking on how to make that work. And working with our legislature and stuff like that, yeah, we may need to do that. But, you know, the thing is, is under Mr. Preston's leadership on this issue, we're leading the state. So, any more, any else for EMS?
I just have a comment. I don't know what the curriculum is over at North Country Community College, but one of the drivers of this need is certified individuals in order to perform the task. I don't know if there's a paramedic or AEMT curriculum at North Country Community College, but it would seem that this is a key need within the county, and also, from an employability standpoint, greater beyond Essex County and the whole region, where, you know, these are skills that are in demand, and there are jobs that are available for people that are certified.
Any else? Okay, well, thank you very much, we'll move on to resolutions.
Resolutions recommended by the Human Services Committee, authorizing a budget amendment in the Public Health Department, decreasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $500, disrep funds.
Move by, Mr. Marahue, second by Mr. Scioscavolo. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Congratulations and appreciation to Christine Carpenter upon her retirement.
Move by, Mr. Tyler.
Second by.
Authorizing the Public Health Department to apply for the Ateneo Foundation Cultivating Healthy Communities grant.
Move by, Mr. Miga, second by Mr. Giordano, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Authorizing the Public Health Department to apply for a disrep retention funds in the amount of $20,000 for partial tuition reimbursement for recruitment retention of a certified walk nurse.
Move by, Mr. Giordano, second by Mr. Marahue. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Adopting and approving quality improvement reviews, policies, and procedures for the preventive services, and approved by the PAC on 4/3/17.
Move by, Mr. Miga, second by Mr. Harrington. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Authorizing a budget amendment in the Public Health Department, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $29,325 disrep funds.
Move by Mr. Tyler, second by Mr. Miga. Discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Recognizing the rebranding of the Essex County Public Health Department to the Essex County Health Department.
Move by, Mr. Miga, second by Mr. Harrington. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Authorizing the purchasing agent to award bid to Garage Equipment Solutions in the amount of $126,532 for a heavy-duty floor left with funds to come from the reserve account.
Move by, Mr. Tyler, second by, Ms. Morrow. Discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Authorizing the purchasing agent to purchase a tire changer in the amount of $12,592 from Total Tool with funds to come from the reserve account.
Move by, Mr. Miga, second by Mr. Whitson. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Authorizing the County Treasurer to transfer the available surplus remaining in the Transportation Department accounts for the year-end 2016 into the Transportation Reserve Fund for the purchase of equipment.
Move by Mr. Tyler, second by Mr. Marahue. Discussion?
Do we know what that amount is? Just, I'm, all right. Okay. I will get it, all.
Further discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Resolutions recommended by the Public Safety Committee, accepting and placing in file the 2016 Ways and Measures Annual Report.
Move by, Mr. Monti, second by Mr. Miga. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Authorizing the purchasing agent to award a contract to Mountain View Planning in the amount of $30,000 PDMA Hazard Mitigation Jurisdictional Grant, and further authorizing the Chairman or County Manager to execute the same.
Move by, Mr. Miga, second by, Mr. Giordano. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Authorizing the Emergency Services Department to accept a New York State Interoperable Communications Grant in the amount of $798,157.
Move by, Mr. Marahue, second by Mr. Miga. Discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
There were no resolutions from the Economic Development Committee. Resolutions recommended by the DPW Committee, authorizing the purchasing agent to purchase a 2017 Contac AP 603 coal planer from Tracy Road Equipment for the Department of Public Works in the amount of $14,257 from budgeted funds.
Move by, Mr. Morrow, second by, Mr. Monti. Discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Authorizing the Department of Public Works to submit a letter of interest to the New York State Throughway Authority for 12 bridge deck panels to be removed from the Tappan Z Bridge and repurposed for use in repairing, replacing Essex County bridges, and further authorizing the County Chairman or County Attorney, Manager to execute a no-cost contract for the same.
Move by, Mr. Monti, second by, Mr. Morrow. Discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Authorizing payment to Lucky's Trailer Sales in the amount of $18,712 for labor and materials of replacing hydraulic pump, hydraulic piping, and certain structural frame repairs to an existing 2000 model year Fabrex 100 cubic yard enclosed solid waste trailer in the Department of Public Works.
Move by, Mr. Morrow, second by, Minister from Depot. Discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Authorizing the purchasing agent to purchase replacement lighting control systems for the Essex County Courthouse and Department of Social Services from Heinz Electric Supply Company in the amount of $20,046 from budgeted funds.
Move by, Mr. Tyler, second by, uh, Mr. Monti. Discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Authorizing a budget amendment in the Department of Public Works, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $335,264 for CHIPS funding.
Move by, Mr. Morrow, second by, Mr. Tyler. Discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Setting the date for a public hearing on Agricultural District Number One, additions and deletions to be held on Monday, May 1st, 2017 at 9:30 a.m.
Move by, Mr. Miga, second by, Mr. Marahue. Discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Accepting and placing in file the 2016 Soil and Water Annual Report.
Move by, Mr. Morrow, second by, Mr. Giordano. Discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Resolutions recommended by the Personnel Committee, authorizing the surplus of board supervisors' boardroom chairs and setting a price to purchase.
Move by, Tyler, second by, Mr. Miga. Discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Setting a price for public purchase of the board of supervisors' boardroom chairs of $50 per chair.
Move by, Mr. Miga, second by, Mr. Tyler. Discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Resolutions recommended by the Finance Committee, authorizing to change the hours of the County Clerk's Office and the Department of Motor Vehicles Office to be open from 8 a.m. to 4 p.m. for the months of June, July, and August 2017.
Move by, Mrs. Scioscavolo, second by, Mr. Tyler. Discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Authorizing an amendment to the contract with InfoQuick Solutions Incorporated to include pricing for optional services.
Move by, Mr. Scioscavolo, second by, Mr. Marahue. Discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Authorizing to change the hours in the Treasurer's Office to be open from 8 a.m. to 4 p.m. for Memorial Day to Labor Day 2017.
Move by, Mr. Tyler, second by, Mr. Miga. Discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
Authorizing the purchasing agent to award bid to docks in the amount of $13,230 to upgrade the Citrix Program Database housed in the Real Property Tax Office with funds to come from the IT reserve account.
Move by, Mr. Scioscavolo, second by, Mr. Miga. Discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried?
I have the one that I had sent you as it relates to reorganization of the DSS Department in terms of moving Youth Bureau Department under the direction and control of DSS, and further authorizing the creation of a Deputy Commissioner of Administrative Services in the non-competitive class graded as a 9MC at the hourly rate of 3128 per hour as a non-union position. That would, that would put a second position under Mike over in DSS. This was discussed at the interviews. We specifically asked all of the candidates if they had thoughts about what it is that they felt should be, or how the department should be reorganized. Mike, as the successful candidate, had brought this to the attention of the interview committee and had requested that we consider this as part of what he needs to make his a successful department over there, and I wholly recommend it. I think it's the right move. There may be some additional things we're looking at as we move forward, but this would initially be the first step in some reorganization, to take better, make better use of not only the people we have, but have them where they need to be in terms of the process itself.
Move by, Mr. Harrington, second by, Mr. Monti. Discussion? Mrs. Scioscavolo. Dan, is the deputy position 40 hours?
No, these are 35-hour positions at a grade MC, that's 3128, so it'd be $56,926 a year.
Thank you. Further discussion, Mr. Harrington?
You also demonstrated that there is a cost saving, is that correct?
That's correct. There would be potentially, I think I put it in the report, $80,000, I believe, would be saved by doing this. And a lot of that's driven by the fact that you are eligible for additional reimbursements under DSS that you are not under the Community Resources Department.
Uh, Mr. Monti?
I just want to say that, you know, Mike's been in that position two weeks, and I think it's a substantial savings that he's already offered us in two weeks. And that's really what I thought Mike would bring to the table, and I think it's a, it's a good thing, and kudos to Mike for coming up with that proposal.
Yeah, I agree, and I think there's some, like I said, I think there's some other things we're also looking at, and I hopefully will come forward with those as we move along.
Mr. Miga?
I also commend Mike, as I always would. I just would like to register that we don't lose sight of the Community Resources Department, and the, you know, we're taking a lot of horsepower out of that. That department facilitates, I mean, a tremendous amount of assistance to the towns, and on very critical matters, like, you know, people getting paid and, you know, contract execution and things of that nature. So I would just like to echo that, you know, as we move forward in one direction, that we don't lose sight of the area that we came from.
Yeah, I agree 100%, and I have not done that. I specifically have talked about Mike in the Community Resources Department. I think one of the key things that you're going to see happen in the Community Resources Department is your, Mike as the department head was also a project manager to a large extent. There's, there's that critical part of the Community Resources Department that provides that, that is really project management-driven. So my intent would be to, and I'm working on it now, is to create a secondary position within that department, just under the department head, that is specifically identified as a professional opinion, or a position whose function is project management. I want somebody who has the technical expertise to know how to get into these grants, know how to get the funding out of them, know how to get the money to the people that have to have them, and to make sure that we have a professional sitting in that position that will be able to do that. So that proposal is coming to you shortly. I am working on that as well. As you know, we are returning the applications on May 5th for the Community Resources position. We've had a couple applicants so far, so we're going to be working on that process. But as part of that process, you are going to be looking at a secondary position under there, and I really want that position to be a professional position that's dealt specifically with project management.
Any further questions or discussion? Uh, Mr. McNally?
Yeah, I'm in complete favor of this, and I just want to, I have the utmost confidence Mike's going to do a great job, but also, we sort of did this in the DPW a couple years ago with Chris taking over and then adding Jim to his team, and I believe that's worked out really well, and I think Mike having him on the team is going to be very beneficial to the county.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Close? Carried? Any further inquiries?
I did have another one. Speaking of reorganizations, we, as you're aware, Todd recently came on as the engineer down in DPW. Part of, part of what's going on is that he's come to us with some suggestions as to what he needs to make his job a little easier. One of the programs that are out there, it's called a Masterworks Comprehensive Library for Bid Construction Software. It's used by engineers to help develop bid documents and to help develop, not necessarily, I guess, the right language that Dan needs for contracts, and he and you and the county needs for leveraging our reimbursements and those kinds of things. So I'm asking for permission to purchase for $7,300 a Masterwork Comprehensive Library software for Todd down at DPW. That, I will take that out of contingent at this point because I didn't plan for it anywhere as yet at the time, but that's one of the tools I think he needs.
Move by, Mr. Morrow, second, second by, Mr. McNally. Discussion?
Is this something else that Linda's going to be able to use, Dan?
I think anybody can make access of it, you know, I think it's, I think Dan is aware of it as well, but, you know, it's just something that, that will help in that process of developing those documents that we need.
Any further discussion? Any none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Close? Carried? Any further motions or discussion with forums, Mr. Scioscavolo? Yes, I'd like to do a resolution of appreciation to Kirk Gregory, who has decided to retire from the DPW after 30-plus years of service. Kirk has, has been an excellent employee through, over the years, and I'm certain that he's going to be missed, so I'd like to move that. Motion for...
Second.
Any further motions or discussion? Any none, we are adjourned.